Good evening. This is the regular meeting of the Southfield City Council, November 13th, 2023, 6:00 PM in council chambers. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Council President Manda Bon.
Present.
President Pro Tem.
Here.
Councilmember Banks.
Present.
Councilmember Wrightwell. Councilmember Cruz. Councilmember Frazier.
Here.
Councilmember Hoag.
Here.
Do you have a call?
Thank you. Will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mayor is unfortunately a little bit under the weather, so I will be filling in for him. The first up was that we have some reappointments to some of the mayor's boards and commissions. If you are here, please come up to the podium. The reappointment to the city center advisory board, Janet Stevens. A reappointment to the downtown development authority, Eric Rusk. The reappointment to the Parks and Rec Board, Rosemary Allen. Reappointment to the Parks and Rec Board, Kathleen McNillis. And then we have one appointment to the Parks and Rec Board of Simon Rivers. Yes.
I'd like to make a motion or move that we accept the reappointment to the city center advisory board of Ms. Janet Stevens, the reappointment to the downtown development authority of Eric Rusk, the reappointment to Parks and Rec Board of Ms. Rosemary Allen, the reappointment to Parks and Rec Board of Ms. Kathleen McNillis, and the appointment to Parks and Rec Board of Simon Rivers.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Frazier, for the reappointments and the appointment as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed, motion carries. Thank you.[173.29][173.29](Applause). At this time, we will have our city clerk swear you in, and then we will allow Mr. Rivers to say a few words afterwards if he would like.
I'm Simon Rivers. I am an associate planner at Oakland County Parks and Recreation, and I'm really excited to be here and excited to join the Parks and Rec Board. And I'm really excited to work on behalf of the city of Southfield and move towards more equity and more sustainability and better natural resources for our city. So, thank you.[230.12][230.12](Applause).
Don't be shy. Get the best aim.
(Inaudible). I do solemnly swear your honor. That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution as a state of Michigan.
And the City Charter of the City of Southfield.
And the City Charter of the City of Southfield.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of the office.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of the office.
In and for the City of Southfield.
In and for the City of Southfield.
County of Oklahoma and the State of Michigan.
County of Oklahoma and the State of Michigan.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.[311.12][311.12](Applause).
We're gonna ask you, if you can come around so we can shake your hand and come right up.
Everyone.
Everybody. We're hosting everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Put you to work quickly.
I'll see your next one.
Oh, that's right. Thank you.
(Inaudible).
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
It is. It's warm in here. Terry has a little fan. That's not fair.[384.12][384.12](Laughter). The next, we have two other reappointments, and I believe this one is coming from the Human Resource Department. I don't know if you're doing them at the same time or one after another? Just one? One at a time? Okay. This is a reappointment of our police chief, Alvin Baron.
I am pleased to present Mr. Alvin Baron for reappointment to the position of police chief. Chief Baron has successfully led the Southfield Police Department since his appointment in 2019. Chief Baron holds a bachelor's degree and a master's of science degree in criminal justice. Chief Baron is the epitome of service and leading by example. The appointment of Southfield Police Chief Alvin Baron has positively changed the direction of the Southfield Police Department. His courageous leadership and transparency has strengthened community trust and reduced incidents resulting in civil liabilities. Chief Baron revised department policies which are now in alignment with national best practices in policing. He has prevented the Southfield Police Department from becoming stagnant by evolving the use of technology and community engagement. He also serves on several boards and commissions. I respectfully recommend or request on behalf of administration that this honorable body appoint, reappoint Chief Alvin Baron in the management group 414 with all position, all other benefits in terms of employment consistent with management group employees. Funding for this position will be made available through existing departmental budget.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I move that we reappoint Chief Baron.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, for the reappointment of Police Chief Alvin Baron. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed, motion carries.
So, I just want to thank honorable body here, certainly the police department and the community for having confidence in my leadership.
Okay.[663.51][663.51](Applause). All right, Chief.[665.51][665.51](Laughter). Chief, we... He's got his own fan club.[674.51][674.51](Laughter). All right. Chief, don't go too far.
Yeah.
We're gonna, we gotta swear you in again.
Yeah. That's right. You want to do them both at the... Allison, you want to do them both at the same time? I got Minifee coming, you want to do them both at the same time? Yeah.
Oh, we're, okay. So, we will hold off on the swearing in for our next reappointment, which is our reappointment of our fire chief, Johnny Minifee.
I am pleased to present Mr. Johnny L. Minifee for reappointment to the position of fire chief. Chief Minifee has served the Southfield community since 1994. He has successfully led the fire department as chief since his appointment in 2016. Chief Minifee holds a bachelor's degree in public safety and a master's degree in technology studies with a concentration in homeland security and emergency management. His, Chief Minifee continues to exhibit outstanding service and commitment to the organization and the surrounding community. The level of fire department community engagement has increased exponentially under his leadership. He also serves on several boards and commissions and was appointed in 2020 as the first African-American president of the Southeastern Michigan Association of Fire Chiefs. In 2023, he was honored as chief of the year by the International Association of Fire Chiefs Great Lakes Division. I respectfully request on behalf of administration that this honorable body approve the reappointment of Chief Johnny L. Minifee in the management group 414 with all other benefits in terms of employment consistent with management group employees. Funding for this position will be made available through existing departmental budgets.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I move that we reappoint Chief Minifee.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, for the reappointment of Fire Chief Johnny L. Minifee. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed, motion carries.[825.25][825.25](Applause).
I'd like to thank council, the board, citizens of this great city, visitors and the business partners for entrusting me to run your fire department. Won't let you down. Looking forward to working, Chief Baron, as we do. People don't know, we talk, if we don't talk every day, we talk every other day. But, so, just to, just to help keep this community safe. So, I really appreciate the confidence and that you have in me to run the department. Thank you.
Thank you.[862.62][862.62](Applause).
I just want to say, let's give a round of applause to Southfield's finest.
All right, congratulations to the chiefs and to all of our reappointments. But don't go anywhere, because we, after communications, we have another presentation to our fire chief.
Yes.
So, with communications, the Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedure for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language towards any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council, and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. Each speaker will have three minutes. Our first speaker is Stacy Jackson. Our next speaker is Keith Harris. Our next speaker is Pamela Gerald.
Well, before I say anything, I just want all of you to give my two chiefs another round of applause, because this is absolutely incredible.[1023.01][1023.01](Applause). I just wanted to say to Chief Minifee that you make us so proud. Chief Baron, you make us so proud, and I want to give a special shout out to my police chief for doing these town hall study sessions. We've already had three of them about gun violence, suicide prevention, and domestic violence. So, for him to allow such a thing to take place and to give the people a place where they can feel comfortable to talk and to get the help that they need is just absolutely incredible. So, I want to just give him another shout out. Don't be scared to clap for my two chiefs. There's a lot of people in here. Come on, let me hear that thunder. Yeah.[1081.12][1081.12](Applause). And to all of the people that ran for city council, to the ones that ran a positive race, I thank you. I've been around this city for almost 42 years, and I've seen some dirty campaigns, I've seen some nasty campaigns, and I've seen some campaigns that I just call grimy, when you just resort to any and everything to try to win. But to all of you, and you know who you are, because I've already talked to you, thank you for showing the people that you could run on the issues and not your race, not your gender, not your religious status, but on the issues and what you're willing to do and how you would like to represent the people of Southfield. So, thank you so much. And I want to encourage people to start coming to these council meetings, be engaged in the process. This is your city, and we, the residents or the taxpayers, are at the top of the organizational chart. And they do technically work for us, but they are accessible, they will listen, they will respond in a timely manner, but just keep, just keep rising to the top. And don't let any negative stuff that we've witnessed and the negative rhetoric coming to the podium discourage you, because there's more people that support you than people that were against you or negatively campaigning against you. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Yolanda Haynes.
Good evening. I'd like to say congratulations to all the candidates that won as well, and I'm very thankful for having been on the campaign trail, very thankful for the people that I have met, those that put their trust in me, and those that supported me, and those that challenged me. I'm also thankful for the citizens that we have in this city that go the extra mile, like Dolores Flag, who was just honored here. But I want to give out a shout out to a couple other names of people that do the work without the recognition, and they've been here and they've done the job. People like Darla Van Hoi, Barbara Selden, I call her Ms. Southfield, Ms. Rosemary Allen. Like I said, and I have a friend back there, Gail Maisie, Louis Poole, Roger Goldsby, Sharkey Hadad. These are great people that have always been in this city, and every event, they are always here to do great things. I think I said Louis Poole too as well. And also, I'd like to see us duplicate these people, and I'd like to thank two people that I don't think will be able to be duplicated. That's Pam Gerald PG and the Silver Fox. So, I'm appreciative of people like that, and I'd like to challenge the people, especially the persons that are in charge of political parties or leadership positions, to, let's work towards teaching ethical standards in democracy. Let's engage, educate, and also add and include all races to this democratic process of voter election responsibility, integrity, and civic involvement. Especially, let's engage in spending more time supporting, encouraging our youth to get involved, to do the work that needs to be done in this city. We are the leaders here now, but we set the example, and we need to do a better job of setting the example to engage the young people. We need them to be here at the polls. I've always taught my kids, and every one of my kids have worked in the election process, and we need to do that, teach other children to do that instead of spending some time doing other things that are not as positive when we're talking about democracy. I think I'm, I think I'm correct in saying this. I got some results, and I think 20.2% of the people in this city voted. And I'm hoping I'm right about this. There are 65% of African-American people here, 23% Caucasian, and down the line. I think that it is not a voter suppression that we have here, but a voter depression. And I think that that is something all persons, especially in leadership, like I say again, should work towards encouraging and telling people why they should vote, also educating them on the process. It's amazing how many people I met that thought different things about the names of people who were voting, and I met somebody that actually thought that Brenda Lawrence was still the president, the mayor, I'm sorry.
Your time is up.
And that was kind of funny to me. But thank you all very much, and thank you for this process. I appreciate you all.
Our next speaker is Greg Keeler. Nope, okay. Our next speaker is Stephen Band. Okay. Our next speaker is Mike Dersda. About a water bill? Not here? Okay, thank you. And that concludes our communications. Thank you. Now, we move on to our presentations, and we have... I'm sorry, is there... Did they sign up? We, they need to sign up in order to speak. I'm sorry. Thank you. Our next is our presentations. We have a recognition and presentation to Councilman Myron Frazier, but right before, we have a small video presentation for him.[1440.01][1440.01](Applause).
Congratulations, Myron, 20 years plus, Mr. City Council, and the City of Southfield definitely benefited from your service, and I want to thank you for serving the City of Southfield. I'm a citizen also, and so I'm sure I benefited as a citizen, and also I definitely benefited as a councilman for your input, your guidance, and your information. Again, I want to thank you and congratulations on your 20-plus years in serving Southfield.
Thank you, Myron, for all you've done for the city over the past several decades. You've been a mentor to me before the meetings, after the meetings, sometimes even during the meetings. Your advice is always helpful. Your jokes are always welcomed during the more trying times during council meetings. Again, thank you for everything that you've done. Thank you for being a mentor to me, for helping the citizens of Southfield, and I hope you enjoy your retirement. Thank you.
I wanted to let you know, Myron, that it's been a pleasure working with you over the years. When I first was introduced to council in 2009, you were one of the first people that came up and shook my hand and spoke to me and said, you know, "Good luck." The one piece of advice that I do remember is that you told me, no matter what decision I make, that I'm only going to be 50% right, because only 50% of the people are going to agree with what I'm saying, and the other 50% are not. So, you said, "The decisions you make, make from your heart, make sure that you can live with them, and that you'll be able to sleep at night." And I've taken that advice, and I work and live with that from now on, and it's been good advice. So, again, congratulations on your retirement. See you around, Myron.
Congratulations on 25 years of tremendous dedicated service to the City of Southfield, and your departure for me is sort of sad, because we've been through a lot over the years, and honestly, you've always been there for me. And we've had some very good verbal tussles. I've enjoyed the exercises we've gone through as we review city issues and various positions that... We, they need to sign up in order to speak. I'm sorry. Thank you. Our next is our presentations. We have a recognition and presentation to Councilman Myron Frazier. But right before, we have a small video presentation for him.
Congratulations, Myron, twenty years plus with the city council. And the city of Southfield definitely benefited from your service, and I want to thank you for serving the city of Southfield. I'm a citizen also, and so I'm sure I benefited as a citizen, and also I definitely benefited as a councilman for your input, your guidance, and your information. Again, I want to thank you and congratulations on your twenty-plus years in serving Southfield.
Thank you, Myron, for all you've done for the city over the past several decades. You've been a mentor to me before the meetings, after the meetings, sometimes even during the meetings. Your advice is always helpful. Your jokes are always welcomed during the more trying times during council meetings. Again, thank you for everything that you've done. Thank you for being a mentor to me, for helping the citizens of Southfield, and I hope you enjoy your retirement. Thank you.
I wanted to let you know, Myron, that it's been a pleasure working with you over the years. When I first was introduced to council in 2009, you were one of the first people that came up and shook my hand and spoke to me and said, you know, "Good luck." The one piece of advice that I do remember is that you told me, no matter what decision I make, that I'm only going to be fifty percent right because only fifty percent of the people are going to agree with what I'm saying, and the other fifty percent are not. So you said, "The decisions you make, make from your heart, make sure that you can live with them, and that you'll be able to sleep at night." And I've taken that advice, and I work and live with that from now on, and it's been good advice. So again, congratulations on your retirement. See you around, Myron.
Congratulations on twenty-five years of tremendous dedicated service to the city of Southfield. And your departure for me is sort of sad because we've been through a lot over the years, and honestly, you've always been there for me. And we've had some very good verbal tussles. I've enjoyed the exercises we've gone through as we review city issues and various positions that the council and for me now as mayor have taken. Your council has been very valuable to me. I've enjoyed your friendship, and certainly, your humor is one of a kind. I only wish that I had put together a book of Myron Frazierisms because I don't know where you get them from, I don't know how you remember them all, but they always seem to come at the right time. Many times, they either break the ice or they relieve tension. And most of all, though, you've really been a wonderful public servant to the city of Southfield. Your integrity and dedication are just unquestioned. And I think you always do the right thing, and I've always admired and appreciated that about you. So I wish you a great retirement from council. I know that your civic activism, whether it's in Green Dolphin Neighborhood, or Caramanos, or any of the other things that you get involved in, will continue. So thank you, and best wishes.
I'm announcing tonight that I'm retiring from the council at the end of my term in November. There will be a new face on council. One of the challengers will be elected. But I want to, if I can take a couple minutes, I want to give you a little bit of advice that I've learned over the years. And there are about seventy thousand people in Southfield. There are seven of us sitting up here, which means that collectively, each one of us is responsible for about ten thousand people in the city of Southfield. They don't all look like you, they won't all act like you, they won't all think like you, but you will still be their representative and have to represent them. At this meeting, as you've noticed tonight, people will come to the microphone, and they will express concerns that they have. Most of the people that come to the microphone are serious about their concerns, but they're very emotional, and they have emotion on their side, and sometimes the facts get a little scrambled. So I'm suggesting to whoever sits in this seat, make sure that you understand the facts, and you don't always, or don't act on the emotions because, yes, my own Myronism, if you will, a hundred percent of the time, you will be fifty percent wrong. And what I mean is, if you vote yes, the people that want you to vote no are angry at you, and if you vote no, the people that want you to vote yes are angry at you. So my suggestion is dig out the facts so that you can explain, look somebody in the eye, and explain to them how you got to the answer you got, and that's the best you can do. Even though they may be angry, at least they may understand. If you do it just on emotion, that may not set well. The other thing is, it takes four votes to get anything done here. So it's a team effort, and you need to make sure that you're on the team. If you're always bucking the team, probably won't go very well for you. One of the things that really bothers me about my not being able to participate like I can, or like I should, is there are other outside organizations that have a wealth of information, and I'm talking about the Michigan Municipal League, the National League of Cities. I haven't been able to attend the National League of Cities in a few years, so I had to give up my position on a committee on the National League of Cities. But there are all kinds of information that you can get from both the Michigan Municipal League, National League of Cities, and other organizations in the area that will give you facts that you can deal with to make the best decision you know how. So whoever gets elected, I'm expecting you to do the best job that you possibly can, knowing full well that in the beginning, you're going to need training wheels. But if you study and work, you'll make it. So good luck to whoever gets elected to replace me in November. Thank you.
Thank you to our cable department for putting that together last minute. There were some council members who were unfortunately not on that video, but we will let them speak now, and it wasn't because of an oversight. It was an older video, the first time Myron retired. But we will allow Councilwoman Banks.
Thank you. To Councilman Frazier, I'm going to keep this short so I don't get emotional. We've known each other, my goodness, probably over forty years. You've taught me a lot. I respect you, not only as a councilperson, but also, I consider you a very good friend. I only wish the best for you in the years to come and in your retirement. This is not goodbye, because I know you're going to still be around. And you were correct in that video. You know, many of you may not know up here, but Myron and I, it seemed like we always attended the same conferences together, and he always encouraged me to get involved with the Michigan Municipal League, and I was proud to be the first recipient in the city to go through all of the master academies. And that's because of your encouragement, your support, and I followed your words. So I was a city clerk in Southfield for many, many years, worked in one way with Myron, and then when I was elected four years ago, I thought, boy, I sure would enjoy working with him next to me on council. And then when he was appointed, my wish came true. So it's truly been a pleasure. We have a great team up here, and I personally am going to miss you. So thank you for your many years of service, my friend.
Councilwoman Hoag.
Councilman Frazier, as I stated in the study before, I've always admired you from afar, looking up to you as a resident, and I'm grateful to God to be in this position. I feel cheated because I haven't hit all the years as you all have had, but thankfully, I've seen you. I can go back and watch the videos. And as I stated before, the wise man that you are and very knowledgeable, as I stated before, I love the fact that you love your family and always spoke well of your family because family is first. And so I just thank you for sharing that with us, and the greatest compliment that I can give you is looking up to you from afar, and you didn't fail me. So I appreciate you, appreciate the little time that I have, and I'm always open for advice, criticism, suggestions, or anything. Thank you.
Councilwoman Taylor.
I don't have the words to say. I will miss you deeply, but I know you're just a phone call away because whenever I call, you do answer. But now you say call the cell phone because that's more convenient. And I will definitely do that. But thank you for making yourself available, and thank you for being my friend over these years. I really appreciate all the wisdom, all of the Myronisms that you give, and you always make us laugh no matter what. I really appreciate you, and I really will miss you. Thank you.
I think what I said in the video still holds true. You've definitely been a mentor to me. Even when I became council president, you offered your advice, your comments, your concerns of how to run a meeting, and different things that I was doing to guide me along the way. And you've made me a better person, a better councilperson, and I definitely appreciate the mentorship and the friendship that we've had over the last several years. You will definitely be missed on council, but I know that you will be continuing your civic involvement and your volunteerism, and you won't be sitting still. You'll definitely be involved in the city in one way or another. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Well, I had the opportunity to sit with you for this past year, and I couldn't have picked a better companion to get us through this year. You've been a joy to, as a colleague, as a friend, as a fellow amateur historian. I'm just pleased to know you, and so I'm looking forward to that, for continuing on for quite some time. And yes, I will make you an apple pie.
All right. Deputy Administrator, did you have anything to add?
Just a brief note, the rights into council meetings and back have been the most enjoyable, and I've been the one who's really benefited from them, so I just want to stand there.
Madam Attorney.
I know this is not a final goodbye, and I'm just so appreciative of all your wisdom from the years past when other city attorneys would send me to the meetings to cover, and just the wisdom that you shared and the stories, and I really, really appreciate it, and just thank you so much. Just really appreciate you. Thank you.
City Planner.
Yeah, I want to wish Mr. Frazier the best of luck. I told him earlier this evening that he was the first council president under my first full year here, and I appreciate his mentorship, and I know you mentioned that as well. I also appreciated his phone calls during the week, work week, and Mondays in particular to let me know he's going to raise a question Monday night so I wouldn't get, you know, a curveball thrown at me, but giving me an opportunity to be prepared. And I've said to him, we didn't always agree, but I always respected him, and I think his legacy with the city will be long felt, and I wish him the best of luck in everything.
Thank you. If, there are a number of department heads here. If anyone would like to say a few words, you can step up to the microphone. I won't call you out if you don't want to.
Keep it brief. Mr. Frazier, I would just like to say thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you for all that you've done for the city. Thank you so very much for all that you've done for the departments. I remember the first time standing here, and it was like standing in front of your parent. It was like, I am so terrified because Dad's in the room. And I'm so thankful that Dad was always in the room. Your leadership and your wisdom, the way you ran the meetings and just kept everything on track, that will certainly be missed, and just the way that you touch people, it speaks volumes for the comments that people have made in this room, and it's irreplaceable. So thank you very much for everything that you've done.
My phone number is the same. Call me anytime you need to call me. I know we talk, I know you called me in a whim, but I appreciate you reaching out, even today, reaching out for some questions. I really appreciate that. Also, you know, coming into the Southfield Police Department, there were some challenges in the beginning, and I do appreciate the support you've given me, some side conversations you've given me about hanging in there, things would change, and it did. So thank you so much for your courage and sacrifice you've given the city and in the support of me through this journey. Thank you.
Hi, Myron. It's been an honor and a privilege to work with you all these years. I've welcomed all of your challenging questions during my presentations, and really, I appreciated all of your feedback. You really added a lot to my experience working here, and all of your knowledge. I appreciate everything that you've done for me over the years, and I hope to see you at some jazz concerts in the future.
Just like to say, Councilman Frazier, I really enjoyed the conversations. I think everyone says that, the phone calls and how you are attention detail when you're looking at things and things that we present. So I really appreciate that. I appreciate the mentorship that you've given me. I appreciate you giving me a yes vote when I got elected in 2016 as a chief, so that meant a lot. I was telling, I had a conversation with your son, I remember when you were in the hospital for a minute there, and I went to go see you, and everyone thought that I was your son, and I didn't correct him. I didn't correct him, didn't want to correct him, but you didn't correct him either. That was the ultimate to me, that you didn't correct him and you let me go with it, and that was good. But I'm going to miss you. You got my number, I'm not far away. I appreciate those conversations, but I really appreciate those man-to-man talks.
I haven't had a lot of time with you, but I want to congratulate you on your retirement and wish you good health and luck in everything you do in the future now. Thanks.
Okay. Myron, do you have a rebuttal?
You guys sure know how to embarrass somebody. You know, when I talk to people, I just tell them what's on my mind, and I try to be as positive as possible. I don't know if you've figured it out by now, but I absolutely love the city of Southfield. And the decisions that I try to make and try to encourage other people to make aren't for today or tomorrow. They're for twenty-five years or more down the road, because a lot of times when we make decisions now, it sets the pattern for what's going to happen in the near future and the far future. And I want this place to be even better than it is. It's a great city, and if anybody thinks that it's not, they just aren't looking around and taking into view and into their heart the things that we're trying to provide for you. And I know that, as some people have said, that when you make a decision, part of the people are going to be happy, part of the people aren't going to be happy, but you have to have the courage to make the decision that you think is going to be the best for the most people in the city of Southfield. And I know we've got a few that are still out there, decisions to make that are out there that are, if we don't do it right, it may divide the thought process of the people in the city. But if we work hard enough, we can explain to the people that will be disappointed how we arrived at that decision, and hopefully, they will understand that we're not just picking on them, but we're trying to do the best for the most people in the city of Southfield. I appreciate everything that everyone has said, but as you were talking, I said, "Who is that guy?" But I thank you so much, and we've got work to do, so let's get on with it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That's going to be hard to beat, but our next presentation is a presentation of the Great Lakes Division of the International Association of Fire Chiefs with the Chief of the Year Award to our fire chief, Johnny Menefee.
I'm just going to start off by saying I've been going to city township meetings in West Bloomfield for years, and I love this meeting. Okay, I'm going to just hang out in Southfield. Honorable members of Southfield City Council, esteemed colleagues... Honorable members of Southfield City Council, esteemed colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I'm Greg Flynn, the Fire Chief in West Bloomfield, and the Michigan representative of the Great Lakes Region of the International Association of Fire Chiefs. It is an immense honor to speak to you this evening about a leader who exemplifies courage, dedication, and excellence in the fire service, Chief Menefee. With a distinguished career spanning over 30 years and a commitment to advancing his education, including at the National Fire Academy and through a master's in Homeland Security, Chief Menefee has consistently demonstrated his dedication to excellence. His transformative leadership has elevated the fire department to new heights of professionalism and effectiveness, significantly improving its ISO rating and fostering robust community relationships. Chief Menefee's impact extends far beyond the operational aspects of his role. Widely recognized for his commitment and leadership, he has profoundly touched the lives of firefighters and community members. His philosophy of elevate, educate, and serve resonates in every aspect of his work, from supporting emotional wellness programs to fostering collaboration with his peers. Tonight, the Great Lakes Division Board of Director adds, Directors adds a significant accolade that underscores Chief Menefee's extraordinary contributions. This award is a fitting recognition of his exemplary service and leadership. I sincerely thank the city of Southfield for sharing Chief Menefee with us. His leadership models what dedicated service can achieve in our communities. On behalf of the GLD Board of Directors, I proudly recognize Chief Menefee as the I A F C Great Lakes Division 2023 Fire Chief of the Year.
I just want to say thank you. Thank you to council, thank you to the great people of this city. For Administrator Zorn, I know he's not, Administrator Zorn, I know he's not here today, but allowing me to step outside of Southfield and, and, and do more for the fire service on the, on the state and the national level. So I really appreciate it. But I'm, I want to say thank you. I mean, every, I think every department head in here I've, I've, have helped me, you know? And that's, that's what I love about the city of Southfield. When I first became chief, people came out of woodworks to try to help me. And I really appreciate my Southfield family. So I want to say thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
But I, I really appreciate, I really appreciate that. So I, I'll accept this award, but I accept this award on behalf of the city of Southfield and all the help that I've received to keep making Southfield great, so. Wow, I was getting there last relief. I remember, remember, remember we talked about you finishing my sentences? Right, right? But no, I couldn't, I couldn't do it without my best friend, my wife, Paula. My Deputy Chief, Macias, who's, who's always quiet, never likes the spotlight. So anytime you see him around, make sure he takes a picture with you, you know, with that, so. But in the great friendships I have in the, across the state, like with Chief Flynn, so I really appreciate it. We got a lot of business to do.
We, we.
We got, I, we'll get it.
We have another surprise for you, Chief. The members of Hatsalla are here as well to provide you with, I believe, another award.
Oh, wow.
Thank you very, very much. Just another small, very small token of appreciation and gratitude to Chief Menefee for his amazing, amazing, amazing work. Presented to Chief Johnny Menefee, Chief of the Year 2023, and gratitude for your exceptional leadership, dedication, and most importantly, your friendship and concern for the community. Your commitment and courage inspire us all. Congratulations on this well-deserved honor. With gratitude, Hatsalla of Michigan Family.
Great, thank you.
Chief, did you want to make another speech and start with thanking your wife?
Yeah, right, you know, I do.
To just thank her.
Thank you.
All right. Now to the less fun part of our meeting. We have four sets of minutes to approve.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes of October 5th, 2023, our regular meeting minutes of October 10th, 2023, our regular meeting minutes of October 23rd, 2023, and the Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes of October 30th, 2023.
Support? It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilman Frazier, to approve the four sets of minutes as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda. Counsel, are there any items you would like to hold for further discussion? Okay, so we have consent agenda item A, the 2024 council meeting schedule. Item B, the Detroit Regional Partnership Membership for this next year. An acknowledgement of the E V Smart Program. Acceptance of grant funding for the 2023 D T E Energy Foundation Tree Planting Grant. Item E, authorization to purchase NeoGov Power D M S Standards for the M A C P and Power Policy. Item F, authorization to purchase the Pharo Focus Premium System. Item G, authorization to contract for the physical medical examination services for the fire department. Item H, authorization to, to repair the ply movement system for the all fire stations. Item I, a receipt of bids for four Bullard Thermal Imaging Cameras and Accessories for the fire department. Item J, a receipt of proposals for Fire Station Two and Five Kitchen renovation projects. Item K, authorization for an emergency repair to the motor of Tower Five, which is a 2002 Soupfin 100-foot aerial ladder truck. Item L, a purchase and installation of a video server for the cable department. Item M, replacement of a citywide budgeting software. Item N, a receipt of bids on printing the 2023 annual report and the 2024 calendar for the Community Relations Department. And item O is the Michigan Municipally Convention Expense Reports for councilpersons Taylor, Hoag, and Banks.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move the approval of consent agenda items A through O.
Support? It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilman Frazier, for consent agenda items, approval for consent agenda items A through O. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing. For this is an economic development initiative, a public hearing request from K Group developers for an establishment of a neighborhood enterprise zone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This item is for approval of a neighborhood enterprise zone district and approval of the applications for new facilities. The district will include 39 condo unit parcels within the Dunn, Scotus, and Dearbrook condominium, plans 2339 and 2340. The item was previously discussed at the September 18th council meeting. And council scheduled a public hearing for tonight's meeting. In order to facilitate the construction and make the cost viable for potential home buyers, K Group developers are requesting that we establish an N E Z zone and approve applications for the new facility N E Z certificates. Public Act 147 of 1992 provides tax incentives for new residential housing developments in a qualified local government unit. The city of Southfield is a qualified local government unit under the Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act. This N E Z also meets the other requirements for parcel count and district coverage area. The city can designate areas as N E Z districts throughout. And once the district is established, the certificates can be approved. The final approval of the certificates is done by the Michigan Department of Treasury. The N E Z program encourages owner-occupied housing and new investment in communities by reducing future property taxes for a period between six and 15 years. This slide, these are pictures of the homes that have already been constructed. Show what the quality of the homes will be. These are the site condominiums. There will be nine of these. I've put together values projected for the, the properties. They're going to have a range of value between 350,000 and 480,000. The N E Z millage is roughly a third of what our total millage is. And that would yield property taxes of between roughly 3,000 and 5,000 a year. This shows what we collect right now in land values. The total tax that's collected is about 44,065 dollars for just the land. Without the N E Z, the total amount of taxes levy would be about 415,000. And with the N E Z, we, the taxes would be about 119,770. So what the N E Z does is it reduces taxes to about 35.63% of what they would pay. The land remains on the ad valorem role, and the building improvements are on the N E Z specific role. Oakland County is also in support. They sent over from the Economic Development Department earlier a letter of support. And then I'll have K Group developers go over their slides briefly.
Thank you, City Council, for your time during this request. Again, we'd like to present the Loser Corner Condominium Project and Initiative. I'm here to represent the K Group Development Team. We are a real estate design and build company with 40 years of excellent experience in the neighborhood. The purpose of this request is the approval of the N E Z exemption and economic stimulus for the Southfield Development Project. We currently have an infill vacant land near Nine Mile and Loser Road where we will develop 39 units total. Again, the range is about 350 to 450,000 per unit. As you can see on the map on the left, we have the vacant lot broken into two site units, the first of which is 30 condos, and the second one is nine single-family homes. This overview map shows the condominium and single-family home site development layout. As you can see, there's a new road developed for the 30 condos. We are currently paving that road and submitted requested permits for the first unit, first building on the left, which would be nearest to Loser Road. We've built four of the nine homes as presented. And during that process, we noticed two main obstacles. And really, the first one is the financial and affordability sector for the potential home buyers. We've looked into initiatives with the F H A and other lenders to provide flexibility to the potential buyers and ease their financial requests. The second item that we look to address is the community population. These units really provide disability and elderly folks an opportunity for a newly developed home. As you can see, this is one of the units, nice, beautiful ranch for potential buyers. This market analysis displays the value of the homes that we are looking to build. We have two models that we have for the nine single-family homes, the Zoe and the Leah. And they're both looking at about $10,000 to $13,000 a year in property tax, which is two to two and a half times the average property tax within the one-mile ratio or radius of the property. So we're really building the, the value of the neighborhood with this project. And unfortunately, the buyers of, the potential buyers of these homes would be experiencing a significantly higher property tax value than the neighborhood. This rendering shows and displays the, you know, overall objective of the Dearbrook condos. As you can see, it's nicely landscaped property, looking to build 30 beautiful condos to support the community and encourage buyers to the Southfield city. Again, our request here is to have the approval by City Council for the N E Z exemption for this project. We really appreciate all your time and consideration for this initiative and look to your guidance and approval of this initiative.
Okay.
Pending any questions from council, I would ask that you open up a public hearing and approve the N E Z district and the filing of the certificates for a period of 10 years, once they're transferred to an owner and occupant.
Okay. We will open the public hearing, and then we'll take questions. If you would like to speak on this economic development initiative, a public hearing, our request from the K Group developers for the establishment of a neighborhood enterprise zone, P A 147 of 1992, as amended for Loser Road, Dunn, Scotus Street Development District Number One. You will have three minutes, and please give your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pamela Duro, P O Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. For many, many years, I've been giving the same telephone number to the residents in the event that they need to contact me for any help. My number is 248-346-0439. I think it's great that this developer is building these houses, and especially in a part of the city that some have deemed a little bit undeveloped. It looks as if the condos are going to be all brick. And for me, that says a whole lot, that they're taking the time to do all brick. I'm always in favor of anything that's going to benefit the residents. But what I would like to see is a copy of the deed restrictions for this condominium complex. And I would also like to see the bylaws. I want to make sure that the deed restriction, the bylaws, and the HOA Association will be friendly to all types of residents that will be moving in to this development. I want to make sure that whatever laws they put in place, that they benefit the people living in there, keeping in mind the city and how diverse we are. I also want to know what their corporate, what their corporate participation will be or has been in the city of Southfield. Other than giving the residents a nice house and hopefully having a, a good document for deed restrictions and some bylaws that will work for everyone else, what is the community benefit? And I'm hoping, we have a lot of things that's going on in the city, a lot of things with kids, with our seniors. We have giveaways for families living in abject poverty. I'm hoping that you become a good corporate citizen in the city of Southfield and not just put your condos here, hoping to sell them and make some money, and we don't see you anymore until you want to buy some other property and build some more condos. So I'd like to see a copy of the deed restriction, the bylaws, and how resident-friendly the group is going to be. Thank you.
Yolanda Haynes, 24501, Kinsel. I think that's an excellent idea of the condos. I have a couple of customers that, one lived in Southfield and moved out because they were trying to downsize. And this was about two and a half years ago. And they said they didn't have anywhere to stay because they couldn't find condos that were suitable. So I think it's an excellent idea, and there are some of my customers that are. So I think it's an excellent idea, and there are some of my customers that are still here that are looking to do that. I did have some concern about the taxes, but I'm sure you all will address that, and I'm looking forward to hearing that because that is a situation we have here in Southfield as well, the taxes, and I think he said three times as much, so I think, I'm sure you all will address that. But I think it's an excellent idea, and I'm looking forward to seeing that because I think we will retain a lot of our elderly residents and also bring others too. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this item? All right, public hearing is closed. I don't know if the developer or the city assessor can address some of the questions that were raised.
To my knowledge, there's no deed restrictions. The developer has also indicated that there are no deed restrictions. We keep copies of the condo documents filed at the assessor's office. They're public information. They're also recorded at the Oakland County Register of Deeds, so they could pull up the condo plan, and then we would have everything pertaining to that condo on file. So we could provide that to anybody that would need it.
Okay, and bylaws would be, would be, could, would be done once you have residents moving in and things like that, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Can you, can you also address the tax question? Maybe just give a very high level of how the NEZ program works, why the taxes start out low, and how they're going to move to what they should be.
Sure. So if approved now, this would be a 10-year exemption, and it would start the year following the transfer from K Group developers to an owner and occupant. So these are going to be owner-occupied homes, they're not going to be rentals. During the term of that exemption, for seven years, they'll pay a ad valorem tax on the land. So that, the land will remain on the ad valorem tax roll. The building value and improvement value will pay an NEZ-specific tax, which is 35% of what they would pay had they not had the exemption. And then the last three years, there's a phase out where the, the third year before dissolution of the exemption, they would pay five-eighths of the city operating millages and the county operating millages without debt off the building value, and then they would pay all other millages times the taxable value of the building, and then it would be three-quarters and then seven-eighths.
Okay, and that's going to be in their, in the sale documents, so the owners are aware that their taxes are starting out lower but will be moving higher after, you know, starting at year seven, is that correct?
Correct. We would inform them, we're required to inform them, and K Group developers will also inform them when they file property transfer affidavits. And they have to, the owner has to apply for the exemption. The applications are placed in abeyance until it's transferred to an owner.
Okay.
Okay?
Counsel, any, any other questions? Counselwoman Banks?
So if the owner does not apply for the exemption, they will pay the full taxes?
That's correct.
Okay, so it will be up, okay, up to the owner, thank you. And then, did you, I'm not sure if I heard you say what the association fees for the complex, has that been determined yet?
I don't believe it has at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move the approval of the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone District per Public Act 147 of 1992 as presented here tonight to, to the amendment, amended of the Loser Road, Dunn Scottus Street, and Deerbrook Drive Development.
Support.
All right, it has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to approve the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone District One for the Loser Road, Dunn Scottus Street Development. Any further discussion, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Council.
All right, thank you. All right, next we have two ordinances to enact.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we enact off ordinance number 1778, the conditional rezoning request of the solo company LLC to rezone the Cornerstone Plaza Shopping Center from B2 planned business to B3 general business, the property located at 23633-23881 on Greenfield Road in the city of Southfield.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to enact ordinance number 1778 as described earlier. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we enact ordinance number 1779, which is the zoning ordinance text amendment to amend the Title V Zoning and Planning, Chapter 45 zoning of the code of the city of Southfield.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Frazier, to enact ordinance number 1779 as described. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we move into our agenda items for discussion and/or action. Our first is a brownfield redevelopment plan and tax increment financing plan for the development of the Matic Auto Wash on Telegraph Road.
Good evening, Council President, Honorable Board. I'd like to introduce Michael Bailey of Matic Auto Wash, and we have a short presentation, after which we would like to request to set a public hearing for December 4th for the brownfield redevelopment plan and tax increment financing plan and reimbursement agreement for Matic Auto Wash at 29300 and 29310 Telegraph Road. Matic Buick GMC and MTB Partners have recently purchased the property on Telegraph Road. This group has been in business since 1963 in Redford, and they've been expanding throughout southeast Michigan. They've partnered with MTB Partners to construct and operate a new car wash facility at this location, and they plan on creating 40 new jobs, and I believe that this project has been in front of City Council in the past, and there's other items coming this evening. The condition of this property, the entire property, is just a little bit over seven acres. It's a former used car showroom for Art Moran. It was built in the late 80s, and it's been vacant since they, since Matic purchased the property in 2022. They have done a Phase 1 and a Phase 2, and there weren't any environmental conditions. However, the property was deemed to be functionally obsolete due to the poor condition. There, there was an operating car wash within the building that they're looking to tear So they're looking to demolish a 10,788 square foot used car, the, the building and the car wash, and construct a state-of-the-art facility with two tunnels, and it's, it's outstanding facility. They're going to have free vacuums for the car wash customers. This system will be, again, state-of-the-art with a new water reclamation system, all the LED lighting, charging stations, it's going to be extremely modern, and they have a similar site in Redford off of Telegraph Road. Now, here's the site plan, and there'll, there'll be plenty of stacking, and all of this is going back again to City Council for, for approval. This property, again, was deemed to be functionally obsolete, and that we've just had a brownfield meeting today to approve the eligible items. Again, the bulk of them are the demolition and just to redevelop the, the property. The brownfield will be a little bit, about $1.4 million, and that'll include the city collecting funds for our, for our local brownfield authority, and the, the numbers on there are a little bit off. I think that the BR, the local brownfield authority is going to receive over the life of the plan of $490,000 that we can reinvest in the community, and so that will be, at the end of the plan, we'll be able to collect that, and the plan is for 14 years. And again, just a short presentation. Again, we will go into more detail on December 4th, if there's any questions.
Counsel, any, any questions? I know this did come before several months ago when it was first being proposed, but any questions on the proposed brownfield? Okay.
So again, we'd like to, a resolution to have a December 4th public hearing.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Yes, I move that council schedule the required public hearing for, and schedule it for Monday, December 4th, 2023, a brownfield plan and tax increment financing plan.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to schedule a public hearing on December 4th for the brownfield redevelopment plan and tax increment financing plan and development and reimbursement agreement for the Matic Auto Wash on Telegraph Road. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
We'll see you in a few weeks.
Thank you.
Next is a request for a public hearing on the Southfield Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative Brownfield Plan Amendment for various properties in Southfield.
Yes, good evening. Again, I have one more after this. We had a big brownfield meeting today. Again, we're looking to request a public hearing for the Southfield Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative Brownfield Plan Amendment to various properties on December 4th. As you might remember, this, as the city was purchasing properties that were foreclosed and we were working, the city was working, the Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative was working with Habitat for Humanity to redevelop properties. They, one of the plans that they were working on was on Westland, and they were looking to build duplexes on, and so it turned out that one of the properties was left out of the brownfield plan, and so at this time, we're looking to make sure that all the properties are included in the plan to make this project move forward. They were having some issues with the zoning board, and so they needed to include this property, so that's really what we're looking to approve today. And again, this property is eligible because it's contingent, it's, um...
Foreclosed.
Yeah, it's adjacent and contiguous to the, the existing properties that are in the plan.
And this is also for December 4th?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? Okay.
Mr. President, you have a motion?
Yep.
I move that council schedule a public hearing for Monday, December 4th, 2023, to hear the Southfield Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative Brownfield Plan Amendment for various properties in Southfield.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to approve a public hearing for December 4th, 2023, on the Southfield Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative Brownfield Plan Amendment for various properties. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
And my last item for this evening, again, is a brownfield request to set a public hearing for December 4th. The Downtown Development Authority and the city are looking to do an amendment to the existing brownfield plan for the Northland City Center. The purpose of this amendment is to make updates to a variety of different items that have arisen over the, the last couple of years. There will be no increases in the dollars that are assigned to this project as well. There will be no additional years, so these are all strictly cleanup items, and to make adjustments for different properties that were purchased as we look to continue to redevelop the Northland site. One of the items is to update the eligible property boundaries, which would to, to include the Byb Credit Union and other adjoining properties, as well as JL Hudson Drive, so that, again, we can use our dollars to increase the tax capture, as well as to make sure that we can do work in those areas. If you've been by the site, you've seen how fabulous it's starting to look. The first two buildings, A and B, are really on their way to get, getting leasing. They have a lot of LOIs for the, for retail on the first floor, so it's very exciting to see that, and they, I believe they just received permission to start working on the, the second two, building F and G. They went through some site plan redesign on those properties. The Costco is moving along very well, and it looks like they'll be opening in either late December or early January, so it's fabulous. A lot of the roads are going in right now. So, again, we, these amendments are to take into consideration the different staging and the timing of these projects. When the original plan was in place, they, they had certain times that they had anticipated the projects to be completed, and as new development occurred, and, you know, as Costco came on, it kind of shifted some of their, their planning, and so that's what we're trying to clean up. So I can flashback to this if you'd like, but, again, we're just looking to update the legal descriptions in the plan, update, as I mentioned, the taxable value, just to have a more accurate taxable value information in the plan and construction timelines, because that all affects how we're capturing the money. We're also adding a couple of millage rates that were not, that were inadvertently left off in the plan, the Huron Clinton Metro Authority, SMART, and the sinking, the school sinking fund, and I just want to remind everybody that the schools are held harmless with this plan, so there will be no negative effect on the schools when I mention the school sinking fund. And then, again, to update the eligible activity table, there were some categories that were overstated with dollars, and we were just making adjustments, again, moving between categories that were labeled within the plan, and so that's, that's the other thing that we're looking to modify.
Counsel, any questions? This is a lot of cleanup on the...
It is a lot, and I'll have my whole team of consultants here on December 4th. Wanted to save a little bit of dollars by not having them at the meeting today, but if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Counsel, any questions? Okay. Need to motion.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we schedule the required public hearing on Monday, December 4th, 2023, second amended and restated brownfield plan, former Northland Mall.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, to approve a public hearing scheduled for December 4th, 2023, for the second amended and restated brownfield plan at the former Northland Mall located at 21500 Northwestern Highway and Associated Parcels. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. More people leave the meeting as we get along. All right, the next is a presentation about a auto wash at 29300 Telegraph.
Thank you, Council President. The next several items are from the planning commission to the council for introduction and discussion. We aren't looking for any action tonight. We will be coming back on the 27th for public hearings and action on items as appropriate. First item is Matic Auto Wash, 239, 29300 Telegraph. This project involves a conditional rezoning, a special land use approval, and a site plan approval, so we do sort of three parts, but we'll present the project as a whole. As noted, it is a conveyor-type auto wash with two bays. This is the site here, the whole auto dealership, not, the Mitsubishi dealership is that building to the right, which would be to the north, and then the corner area up by Woodland Drive is the other part of that site where the auto wash will be, the old Mitsubishi dealership is currently located. Some existing conditions, there's the Buick dealership, kind of off to the left, you can see the Mitsubishi building. The lower photo is the corner from Woodland Drive and Telegraph. It is currently zoned B3, most of the site, except for that piece up on the corner, which is zoned P, vehicular parking. That piece needs to be rezoned B3 to match the rest of the site in order to allow the car wash to operate its vacuum stations and not just be parking in that location. So that is the conditional rezoning. There are, the offered conditions are limitations on the useless, these are the excluded uses. They are excluding private clubs, nursery schools, photographic studios, funeral homes, assembly and concert halls, rec centers, bowling alleys, skating rinks... assembly and concert halls, rec centers, bowling alleys, skating rinks, alternative financial services, pawn shops, smoking lounges, homeless shelters, soup kitchens, sexual oriented businesses and cabarets. The site plan, as you can see, there's the Mitsubishi dealer's gone, the awning between the two buildings is gone. New car wash isn't where the Mitsubishi building was and then there's about a thousand feet going to the rear and then splits into four lanes for pay station. And then you've got the vacuum stations off, tools for Woodland Drive on the north end of the site. There's a screening wall up on that, around that area on Woodland Drive because there's residential zoning adjacent. Here's the landscape plan. You can see the, the plantings that are going on here in the front along the vacuum stations and plantings along the inside of the screening wall as well. Just some floor plans, as you can see, the lower one is the main car wash. Then there's a second floor minimal, middle area with some mechanical rooms that serve the car wash. Elevations and some renderings, get a little bit better sense of what it'll look like. This is the front, kind of looking from a little bit to the south. From a little bit from the north. This is the enter stations on the, be the east side of the building. And then from the corner here, looking across the vacuum areas to the actual car wash. Another shot kind of of the whole site from the front. And then we do have a petitioner present to answer any questions if you have them.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Did you have anything to add? If you do, you need a, we need your name and address for the record.
Shane Burley, Studio Detroit Architects, 2040 Park Avenue, Suite 200, Detroit.
Hi, I'm Molly Williams, dealer operator here at 29300 Telegraph Road and owner of the property as well.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any questions? Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. I've never been to the car wash that's on tele, I think it's Telegraph and the Expressway. Do you offer like monthly or yearly memberships or is it just you drive in, pay and then go through?
So you can do monthly subscriptions if you want and then we also do, you can just pull up and pay for the wash that you're getting at the time. But not yearly. So there's monthly subscriptions or you can choose to just buy a wash that day as you pull up? Does that answer that?
Thank you.
Yep.
I just have one quick question. The entrance is not on Telegraph. Did I see it's on a side like?
The entrance is on Telegraph.
It is on Telegraph? Can we go back to the color picture?
So you en, you enter the drive from Telegraph and then you enter the car wash from that east side of the building? So the queuing is like around?
So you'd enter in on the bottom left corner?
Right, but that's
That's Telegraph.
That is Telegraph? Okay. Okay. As I stated before, I support this idea. I use your, your other locations. So it'd be great to utilize one in my city.
The, the question I have is, we just had earlier in this year, we had a car wash presentation and they were having heated concrete as you exit. So there, there's no ice buildup. Is that part of this plan?
We've done that successfully with the other location in Redford. We would have, usually it's a small electric mat that heats, you know, de-ices really the entry and exit points right at the tunnel doors.
Not built in to the con, like not?
It is. It's underneath the concrete. It's cast in place.
And that's part of this plan as well?
Correct. Not the entire site though.
Correct, correct. That'd be nice. We should have the city do that for their streets. Planner Crow, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I know this is a conditional zoning, so you guys offer what you're willing to put in as conditions. It's not a negotiated, similar to like a plan unit development. But I was curious why marijuana facilities weren't excluded from your list. I know that there's a prohibition based on the distance separation that's required for residential to B3, but since it wouldn't be allowed, why wasn't part of your exclusions?
I didn't hear, what was the initial question?
Why marijuana facilities weren't excluded from your list of excluded uses?
I think it's just an oversight, honestly.
Yeah, I was like, if it was an oversight, you would add that. If that wasn't
Yeah, we, and again, it's a voluntary thing on your part, but it would be something that I would advise the council to consider before they approved it. And you can make that modification prior to next, the public hearing on the 27th.
I think we would.
Thank you.
Anything else, counsel? All right, so to the planner, this will come back to us at which meeting?
On the November 27th meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
We look forward to seeing you on the 27th.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We'll be back the next few meetings.
All right, next is a discussion regarding a proposed gas station convenience store with alcohol sales and carryout restaurant on Northwestern Highway.
Thank you, Council President. As noted, this is the corner of 12 Mile and Northwestern Highway. There was actually a gas station approval for this earlier this year, but that project did not go forward as originally proposed. This is a, a different group coming forward with an altered proposal. This is the site. It's two parcels. They're going to be combining them. The buildings on the right will be torn down. The FedEx office on the left, they're going to renovate and use that for the station, which is a change from the prior proposal. Just some photos of the existing site, FedEx office building, which is closer to the corner, the dry cleaner. And then on the other side there, there's that multi-tenant building. It is zone BT, general business, match future land use plan is commercial office, which is a consistent. This is the new site plan where they renovate the existing building and then the pump islands and the cars. All that happens on the interior, on the east side of the site. It does allow us, allow them to eliminate completely the two curb cuts closer to the corner and get rid of that parking lot that's would be on the west side of the building that used to serve the FedEx. So that is, and we consider that an improvement where you're taking out that cut through set of curb cuts on the Northwestern and 12 Mile at that intersection. Here we go, landscape plan. So there'll be, where that parking lot would be on the west side of the building closer to the intersections, now they're all going to be landscaping and there'll be an art piece they're proposing for that location. They haven't identified the piece yet, but they've got a little placeholder for it here at the corner, this little box. That's where it would be going. So you've got your curb cuts kind of as far from the intersection almost as you can get them. They offset them so there wouldn't be quite as much motivation for cut through traffic at the site. They do have a couple EV charging stations over here and bike parking up here. They do have good pedestrian connections going to the front door from both sides and from the patio, which is for the customers or the employees if they want to take their food outside and eat there. Floor plan, first floor, you've got a tenant space here. This would be the carryout restaurant, the C store, outdoor dining. There is an existing mezzanine in the building on the one side, you can see on the second floor plan. They'll be keeping that for storage and office space. Elevations of the building are getting a pretty major makeover. The building is not quite completely unrecognizable, but virtually unrecognizable to its current form. Different sides of the building, got a pergola over the seating area. And we do have the petitioner present to answer questions if they would come forward.
And if you could just give your name and address for the record and if you have anything to add?
Joe Kane, Fieldstone Architecture, 3400 Auburn Road, Auburn Hills.
Good evening, Vincent Oro, 6340 St. James Street, West Bloomfield, 48322.
Did you have anything to add to the presentation? All right, counsel, any questions? Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. Could you slowly show where are the pump stations again?
Right here. That's the canopy. You see those little ovals underneath it? Each of those is a pump island. So there's eight pump islands stationed on each side. So here, there's two, here there's two, here there's two, and here there's two.
So this proposal is opposite of what originally was proposed for the
Yeah, they were going to retain the buildings on this side of the site and put the pump islands where the building is. So it's a complete
What side, your, where's yours?
Sorry.
On what side?
So that's where the pumps would have been, over here where the, where the building they're keeping is. So the FedEx office building would have been torn down and they would have built the pumps there.
Right.
And then they would have kept, I think they were keeping one of the buildings over here for the actual
Everything was being demolished or
But it was a complete reversal. It was a total swap in terms of the prior arrangement.
Thank you.
I, I like this design better.
Yes, so do I.
I have a question. At the corner of Northwestern 12, what is that in pink there?
These three circles are actually trees. They're ornamental trees.
Trees?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
I think red buds, if I remember correctly from the landscape plan, but they're an ornamental tree, three ornamental trees, flowering trees.
Yeah, I definitely like this design better because even, you know, people are always cutting in on that corner there, trying to get to 12 Mile. So this seems a little bit better. So I do appreciate that, that design.
Okay. Any other questions, counsel? Commissioner Fraser?
What kind of food will be in your restaurant?
I would not yet selected a tenant, but some type of, you know, fast foods, finger food, type of catering. We're looking for, but we have not yet selected a, a tenant for that space yet.
Well, well, are you looking for the kind that they come in and order it and it's prepared then or it's already prepared and, and packaged?
Possibly both.
All right. You're going to sell liquor?
Uh, yes, hopefully.
Beer?
Yes.
Are you going to sell ice?
Yes.
Going to be inside?
Currently, we have a chest on the exterior of the building. It met all the ADA requirements. Now we had some kickback, but if it is required for us to bring it inside, we do not have an issue with that.
That's our druthers.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I said, that's our druthers that be, the ice chest to be inside?
If I could, through the chair. Counsel did ask us if they could meet all the ADA requirements and have an ADA accessible ice chest and meet all of the circulation. That is an option to have it on the outside and they have proposed it that way. Otherwise, the old style ice chest, we prefer to be on the inside.
Okay, you will be able to be, meet all the ADA requirements?
As it sits now, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I think I missed, are there AV, EV chargers?
Yes, this area up here in the corner, be the northeast corner, there's two EV spots. Like there'll be one stationed in the middle that serves both of these two spaces.
Okay. And will that be able to add on in the future? There's conduit there?
Yes, as demand.
Correct. Counsel, any other questions? Okay. So this is coming back to us on the 27th. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, and now we have a proposal to renovate and, and expansion of an existing building for a private club, restaurant, smoking lounge, bar.
Got a little out of sequence here. I gotta skip, skip ahead. Here we go. This is at 29410 Northwestern Highway, where Baco is presently located. There's a special land use approval and site plan approval. The use is a combination of permitted uses, private club and restaurant, and special uses, smoking lounge and bar. The zoning is B3. Master, the future land use plan is also a commercial office, which is consistent. Site aerial, Northwestern's there to the left. Existing, the footprint of the building is going to change some, but the basic site configuration will remain similar. Some existing site photos all around the site, kind of, it's the back on the bottom there and the rear areas parking. This is the proposed site plan. There is a front addition to the building. And the patio will be expanded and moved out as well. So they're reconfiguring that front aisle and moving some parking spaces around. And they are doing, making some substantial facade alterations and interior renovations. The landscape plan, landscape on the site is already fairly good. It looks like they're going, with some of the modifications to the site, they do have to shift around some of the landscaping, but it will meet the code requirements. Partial first floor plan, as you can see on the left of this, that's the new outdoor patio. And then the new dining room is added in addition on where kind of the existing outdoor patio is now. So this is the outdoor patio here with the fountain in it and then this is the new dining room. The yellow areas are, what areas are getting renovated? You've got the bar with restaurant and retail. And you have humidors. Kitchen is in gray. This is the rest of the first, the first floor plan. You've got some private rooms that, you know, can be taken for groups. And then you've got the retail outlet with a humidor for the cigar cells as well. And then you have the remaining tenant spaces, four tenant spaces, which are in gray. The second floor is getting a, a little bit of a makeover as well, mostly mechanical and storage on that floor. A little bit of office space. Here are some renderings from the architect as to what this would look like. You can see the outdoor dining area with its Louvert cover, the din, new dining room with the skylight in it. And then the new main entrance, really kind of giving it a very different look from it has now. Elevations of the building, top elevation there is along the the side as you would go in along the driveway with the main entrance, sorry, the main entrance here in the middle. Outdoor seating off to the left here. And then from the other side of the building, you see the dining room with its large windows and the outdoor seating as well. And then from the front. We do have the petitioner and his architect present if they'd like to come forward.
All right, just give your name and address for the record and feel free to add anything else.
Good evening, my name is Luciano Del Signori, 29410 Northwestern Highway, Southfield, Michigan, known as Baco Restaurante and I'm the chef owner for coming up on 22 years on that property. And we're looking to do this major improvement and invest a lot of capital back in the property to hopefully stay for another 22 years and build a world-class restaurant and smoking lounge and private dining facility. And I've enlisted Soroki Architecture Firm to, to redevelop and redesign this property and I have our architects here with us.
Good evening, Alex Soroki, Soroki Architecture. I think the planner did a great job giving an overview of the project. I'd just like to highlight a few items if I could.
Can you just give your address for the record?
Sure, sorry, 430 North Old Woodward, Birmingham, Michigan.
Thank you.
The existing structure is a multi-tenant building with Baco as the anchor tenant occupying more than 50% of the center. Our design does expand the building to the south closer to Northwestern Highway where Baco's outdoor dining is today. With the expansion, we are approving the drive aisle circulation at the front of the site. We're introducing a pedestrian pathway, bike racks. Hey, I'm going to turn, that'll be easier, excuse me. Bike racks and a substantial landscape plan. Our proposal includes 160 seats indoors and 40 seats outdoors. Today, Baco has 160 seats indoors and 60 outdoors. The cigar restaurant and bar will feature all-new interiors and decor, which will be warm and rich. The first level features a bar lounge, formal dining room, covered outdoor dining, two private dining rooms, wine cellars, walk-in humidors and a small retail space. The existing kitchen will remain and the second level footprint is actually being reduced and used for mechanical equipment, storage and a few offices. The existing parking lot has 74 spaces today and we're maintaining that same number of spaces. Baco's operated successfully for more than 20 years with more seats than what is being proposed today. Valet operation will manage parking like they do without any problems. Luciano's had a shared parking agreement Luciano's had a shared parking agreement with his neighbor to the west. Uh, since Baco opened, there's actually an existing pass-through on the site. Um, and I just wanna mention that the peak demands of the other tenants in the center and the adjacent property are different than our peak demands, which are in the evening. Uh, we're very excited for this next chapter, uh, with the new cigar restaurant and bar, and, uh, of course, happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, Councilman Hoag?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, so currently, it's like one way in, one way out, correct? And then in the, the updates, are you gonna be able to come all the way around?
So you can, the, the circulation of the site today is you can go all the way around the building. There is the main drive aisle off of Northwestern Highway, which is access in and access out.
Oh, you can go all the way around?
Yep, and, and that's gonna be maintained today.
I just remember coming back out the same way. Um, okay, that's great. Um, looking forward to that. How long do you think this entire, um, remodeling and addition will take?
We're, we're still working through that. I, obviously, we're trying to get through the approvals, but once construction starts, uh, we're hoping it's somewhere between eight to ten months.
I'm flipping six to eight.
Hey, counsel, any other questions?
No.
All right, um, and this is coming back to us on the twenty-seventh.
Um, yes.
So we will see you in three, two weeks.
Two weeks.
Okay. And our next item is, uh, a tag team with that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and if we want to have a smoking lounge, then, uh, planners, let's take us through our zoning text amendment for smoking lounges.
Yes, uh, as, as we detected when the, this proposal first came forward, our, our current, uh, site development standards for smoking lounges would have prohibited the cigar bar in this location. So, uh, we did have to make a few modification, or are proposing a few modifications here that would allow a cigar bar to operate at this location. We do, uh, are amending three parts of the code because the same site development standards are in three different zoning districts because it's a special land use in three zoning districts. The first is a change of spacing between smoking lounges, rather than being a half a mile at twenty-six, forty feet. We'd be reducing that down to fifteen-hundred feet. The Casa de Mano Cristo on Northwestern is about sixteen-hundred feet away, so that would have excluded this site on this provision. The Casa de Mano Cristo is actually, is, as best I can tell, checking the records, the only currently legally operating smoking lounge in the city. So the s- next phase was distances to, uh, residential zoning districts, schools, religious institutions, parks, childcare facilities, firearm dealers, and businesses selling alcohol. Uh, the site would have been excluded on multiple factors on this, particularly residential zoning district, um, childcare facility, and business selling alcohol, since they actually sell alcohol, will be selling alcohol at the facility. So we looked this over and thought, well, how do we address the genuine concerns? Um, which was mostly impacts on people's, uh, use of their residential yards and playgrounds for various schools, childcare facilities, religious institutions, parks. And we have looked at, uh, reducing that five-hundred down to two-hundred foot, which is a very commonly used separation distance in the ordinance for uses. Uh, for a residential uses, measured from the exterior of the portion of the structure used for the smoking lounge to the personal line of the residential use, because we were impact, interested in the impact on not just the house, but the yard and the enjoyment of the yard. The second was, um, can be located more than, near than two-hundred feet to any outdoor playground or school. If it's school, childcare facility, religious institution, park, or similar use. This came up because there's a licensed daycare preschool in the athletic club next door, and it has a park on the north side of the building. And that's about three-hundred feet away, but two-hundred foot allowed that to be a, a reasonable separation. The outdoor smoking, we had to look at that. Once again, we wanted to add some language about outdoor smoking relative to its separation from residentially-used parcels or outdoor playgrounds. That's actually got a bigger buffer, it goes up to three-hundred. And then we added some language we borrowed from the marijuana codes related to odor control. You can see we are, uh, we're gonna require, just like we do with the marijuana facilities, um, a detailed odor control plan and methodology, um, required under this section as part of their, um, final approvals for permitting and construction. Uh, so that, those were the changes we really needed to kind of make to address making this location legal uh, with regard to the current standards, which were fairly restrictive. Just as a, a matter of reference, here's a map showing the three zoning districts that allow smoking lounges as special land uses, and there's special land uses in all three. All three of them would require them to come to council to get a special use approved before they could function. And these sites don't even take into account the separation distances. These are just the zoning districts, the B-three, the RC, and the RS, where someone could apply, or at least look. But it doesn't take into account the fifteen-hundred foot separation from other smoking lounges, two-hundred from residential, two-hundred from outdoor plareas, you know, and three-hundred foot outdoor smoking. Once you actually figure those in, it's gonna shrink the amount of land available substantially more than what you even see on this map. But given all those factors, it was hard to figure out how to map that without it taking an inordinate amount of time looking at every single parcel that's within those zoning districts. But it's a fairly limited area of the city, those three zoning districts, and given these separation distances, it's probably a much smaller subset of those parcels that would actually be available even under these amended standards. Um, and we do have, uh, if you have any questions, the planner, crook, and I are here to answer them.
Yeah, I, I just wanna add too that, you know, decades ago, when s- some of these standards were put in place, the, uh, filtration systems weren't as modern as they are now to deal with smoke. I think there was some blanket, just, let's, let's put these separation distances in there and call it a day. And we look and work very closely with, uh, legal to make sure we're consistent with other types of similar uses and we're not just arbitrarily throwing numbers up there. So these, um, these modifications do help this specific site, but they also are consistent with other, uh, distant separations that we have for other similar types of uses.
Counselwoman Taylor?
Yeah, do we need to approve these text amendment prior to the other?
They'll both be returning to you for public hearings on the twenty-seventh. And the proposed resolution language that we've drafted that went to the planning commission includes a condition that this amendment be passed, for that to be valid.
Okay, so long as it's in there somewhere, because I, I just, I'm looking to make sure that we don't get any complaints or saying that it was approved under this one and then that.
Yeah, and we, we'll make sure when we do the agenda that the public hearing on the text amendment is just prior to the special land use.
Okay, perfect.
So if one doesn't get approved, then the other one doesn't get heard.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions, counsel? Okay, so we will see this again in, on the twenty-seventh. All right, next we have a presentation and discussion for, to permit a executive, administrative, and professional office uh, as tenants in an existing multi-ten, tenant commercial building at nine mi, uh, Nine Mile.
Yep, thank you, council president. This is, uh, the Tel-Nine Plaza. It's, um, on the south side of Nine Mile, just a little bit east of Telegraph, like just past the gas station. It's a five-unit center, it's been in existence for a while, it's B-three zoning. It's, uh, future land use map is commercial office. There's a aerial photo of the site with Nine Mile kind of on the sou, the bottom, Telegraph on the right. The request in the B-three, um, medical offices are permitted, but professional executive and administrative offices are a special use. So it had to go through planning commission and come to you for that approval, for this approval. They're not proposing any change to the site. The renovations would be strictly interior and I assume signage for the new tenant. They have a staffing office, uh, use that would like to go into the building. And, uh, when they came forward to us, they said, could we just ask for allowing office use in all of our tenant suites and not just in the one? So we don't have to come back here potentially four more times? And, you know, we're like, well, if you phrase your request that way, then yes, we can consider it that way. And planning commission thought that was reasonable as well and did recommend approval that way. They actually, planning commission, I'll just say, planning commission has asked us to look into potential for moving this type of office from special use status to permitted use as with the medical offices. Here's the floor plan, you can see the center tenant space is the one they're considering presently, but they do have some other vacancies that they're looking to fill. And some, the site is in fairly good repair, uh, and been recently restripped. Landscaping is in decent shape, building itself is in good repair. Uh, I know the petitioner is present to, to answer any questions, if he'd come forward.
All right, if you wanna give your name and address for the record and add anything else you think we should know?
Yes, Stephen Band, one of the members of Tel-Nine Plaza. Um, the management office is thirty-one thousand Northwestern Highway, Suite two-hundred, Farmington Hills, Michigan. We've owned the property for over forty years.
Do you have anything to add from what the, the, from the presentation?
No, that's it. I mean, it's, we're try, we're, we're in a different time. We're in a, than what we used to be. Um, I understand you may be doing some change on your zoning for this, even though it's allowed within the zoning. Uh, the old comment, we're now in an Amazon world. Um, we're looking for good quality tenants. We turn people down. I don't like a vacancy, but I don't want a headache, and I wanna be proud of who goes into the property.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? Okay, so we will see you back on the twenty-seventh. That's gonna be another long meeting. All right, thank you. All right, and then our last planning item is a, the city of Southfield would like to construct a new storage building at Public Works. Sorry. Little, little laggy.
There we go, there we go. Yes, uh, the city of Southfield, Department of Public Works is looking to do, add a storage building to their facility at the end of Clara Lane. Uh, this is an aerial photo showing the context, it's up against, uh, the highway there at the end of Clara Lane. Uh, the, on the north side of Clara Lane is actually the Road Commission of Oakland County's Public Works facility. There is, uh, one of the ordinances you enacted this evening actually made this a permitted use in this district, so that was very helpful. Uh, the RC zoning is future land use map is community facilities, other institutions, because the Public Works facility's been there for the best we can tell since the mid to late sixties. Uh, site aerial, the bottom kind of right end of the triangle is the area they're looking at for the storage building. And I know they're using that to kind of keep, put some of their equipment indoors and to move some of its exterior storage on the site. So you can see, it'd be this area here, they're showing this is existing conditions, but down here in the corner. Some cert, photos of the site here, the top photo is kind of entering in off the end of Clara Lane. And then at the end of the driveway, they're going into the actual main facility. Some of the exterior storage on the site, you see that. And this is the proposed building in that, down that corner. Uh, it does have a twenty-foot clear around it as required by the building and fire, uh, codes. Some elevations, the sides and fronts, they do have man doors on each end and overhead doors on the ends, and then a man door on the side. And then they do have a, a floor plan just showing the kind of, uh, a, a arrangement of storage inside the building. And I know we have, uh, I believe, we have folks here from the, to represent.
Patrick Ryan, Public Works Director, and we have Christopher Ozog of OHM Advisors. So they can, we can answer any questions you may have regarding this project.
Counsel, any questions? There will be electricity in the building, is it being heated and cooled?
No, it literally is cold storage. The idea is, is that we will park equipment that's been parked outside, um, in there to get it out of the elements. Also, to make it available on the water side in case of emergency. So you don't have to be digging through three feet of snow to find a clamp or a certain section of pipe.
Okay, and like every city building, it will be key-carded, cameras, secure?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions, counsel? Okay. And this is coming back to us also on the twenty-seventh.
It's gonna be a full night.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and that takes us to our counsel portion of our meeting, and we'll start with Councilwoman Hoag.
Um, I would just like to, um, thank our clerk and the clerk's office for a successful, um, election day last week. Um, and as, um, mentioned before, want to thank our clerk who stepped up when needed last year, and we just appreciate all that you've done for the city and continue to do. Thank all, um, everyone who was involved in the election process and, um, looking, and I'm grateful for, uh, success for myself and looking forward to continuing to work for the city. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Taylor?
Uh, yes, I'll just echo the same sentiments of, uh, Councilwoman Hoag, saying thank you to our interim clerk. Outstanding job over the last year filling in, thank you very much. Uh, congratulations to all of you, welcome back. And again, I'd like to let Mr. Frazier know that I will be calling whenever I have a question, so thank you for always making yourself available. I will miss you, but, uh, and your Myronisms a lot. But, uh, I wish you must, much, much success, and hopefully you'll get a little bit more rest. Uh, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you, um, I wanna echo what my colleague said, um, also, and thank you, um, to our city clerk, not only for a successful election, but more importantly, for stepping up and agreeing to do a dual role, role in the absence of the city clerk. It was a lot of work, she did it with grace, she did it with a smile on her face, and I just wanna say thank you. I'd also like to thank all the voters that came out on November seventh. Um, I'm honored to be serving another four years, um, with this great city. I'd also like to congratulate my colleagues, um, I'm looking forward to working with you again, as well as, um, Mr. Charles Hicks, and also our new city clerk Janet Jackson. I look forward to working with both of them. To Mr. Frazier, you're just a phone call away. I know we're gonna still see you around City Hall, so I'm not gonna say goodbye to you. And, um, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Frazier?
Thank you, um, you know, and, uh, a few years ago, I, uh, retired from the city council and I thought that I would be, uh, satisfied with staying at home and maybe watching the council meetings on, on TV or on, uh, at night. And I found out that, no matter the fact that I was not here in person, I kept looking around for things that would make, uh, Southfield a, a better place, uh, especially when, uh, the deer were running around and, you know, how can we, how can we deal with that? Well, it's not my responsibility to deal with that anymore, but, uh, I couldn't let it go. And I guess I've just got Southfield in my, in my veins. I, I really have enjoyed the time that I've spent on council and the other volunteer work that I've done with the city, and, uh, still not done. And, uh, I know, uh, Council Lady, uh, Taylor said that she would remember the, uh, Myronisms. It's just so I haven't, yeah, a couple of weeks ago, I was talking to my son, and we were talking about something, and I, one of those Myronisms popped in my mind. And I can usually take one and, and make it into whatever it fits that we're talking about. And I said, well, you've probably heard this before. And he said, I don't think there's anything. And he said, I don't think there's anything I haven't heard before in the last 15 years. So, but I've really enjoyed myself, and tonight was way over the top as far as thanking me for what I've done, because I should be thanking you for the opportunity to let me sit here and try to do some things to make the city a better place. And I'll keep it in my mind, I'm still gonna keep hounding you if I see something that I think you should be doing, but I feel comfortable that there's a good collection of good thinkers on council that I don't have to toss and turn at night saying, oh, why did they do that? But it's not goodbye, it's, I'll see you around. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That's tough to follow, but I too, I just want to thank the city clerk, code enforcement, the police department, all the other city departments that helped out on Election Day. I know it's a, it's a bigger operation than, than people realize, so thank you also to our city clerk for stepping up in a time of need. We appreciate you and your service and help. And also to Councilman Fraser, again, thank you very much for your mentorship and your leadership on a council, and it's definitely a see you later, not a goodbye. So we look forward to working together on many, many things in the city in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
We, our mayor is absent, he's under the weather. I was going to give a shout-out to our small, for Small Business Saturday that's coming up, and our chamber executive, I think she just left, but Shelley, do you have any information that you'd like to share on, on Small Business Saturday, that I know that we're partnering with the chamber on that?
Well, we work with the chamber, and Oakland County is having an initiative, and people are welcome to go to oakgov.com and find out how you can enter a sweepstakes, you can bring your receipts from shopping at local stores throughout the county, and they had the kickoff at one of our local boutiques on November 1st, Irresistible Boutique. And so that was great that we could kick off the event, but we're welcoming people to go to oakgov. And we're also having an event with Oak Park and Lathrop Village, a tri-city celebration to, just to help with small businesses, to learn how to, you know, get best practices to get ready for, for, you know, shopping online and coordinating your efforts with in-person shopping. And that's on the city's website, and I think it's next Thursday, so, in Oak Park. So if everyone could just please check the city's website at the business development, or the business page, and the information's on there.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Deputy Administrator?
Thank you, good evening, counsel. We have one item for you tonight. Back on June 12th, council authorized substantial construction at Carpenter Lake.
Is your mic on?
It is.
There you go.
I'll just move a little closer. You authorized a substantial project, Carpenter Lake, which included redoing the entire parking lot, but not the drive to 10 Mile. At the time, the drive was acceptable. With the construction, unavoidable construction traffic, it's not, it needs to be replaced. We're asking for a change order to authorize an additional $79,760 to rebuild the parking lot. There is no change to engineering or contingency, this just covers the construction of the driveway, and the state, the equipment is staging for both projects at the same time, so this will not delay the project, but it will make the drive look as good as the rest of the park after this is done. There is funding already available in land improvements in Parks and Rec funding.
Okay. Counsel, any questions on that item? I know our, our Parks Director has been sitting patiently throughout our meeting, just in case. Yes?
I moved the approval of the authorization.
Of the authorization to amend the award for the construction contract for Carpenter Lake as presented.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to approve the authorization to amend the award for the construction contract at Carpenter Lake to WCI Contractors Incorporated. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Deputy?
No, sir, thank you, counsel.
All right, Madam Attorney?
Good evening, counsel. I have nothing to add except congratulations to everyone that ran successful campaigns and election. I look forward to working with you, I've learned so much from everyone over the past years, and I just look forward to learning even more. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
I just want to say, first of all, thank you to, the entire city is so involved in the election, code enforcement, police officers, DPW, and of course, the clerk's office staff. And so just kudos to them for the job that they do day in and day out, and especially on Election Days and that long two weeks beforehand. And just also thank you guys for allowing me to serve in this capacity. Thank you for listening to me when I offer my unsolicited opinions. And thank you just for the opportunity to be a part of my own community and to serve it in a way that hopefully was helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. City Treasurer's not here, city planner just left after many presentations, city assessor was here earlier, city engineer. We have nothing to schedule, anything else to come before this council this evening? All right, meeting is adjourned.